Sorry, I just started.
We have Jeff till seven because he has another engagement afterwards. So with that being said, look for, we've got to clean up some minutes. So we have the minutes of December 7th on the solution board. I have a second. By Jeff, seconded by Kendra. Any changes, updates to the minutes of the 7th? All in favor, Kendra?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Andy?
If I'm allowed to participate remotely, yes.
Yes, and minutes for December 7th? Any changes or you go?
Good.
Okay, minutes of December 21st.
Yeah. I'll make the motion.
Well, just written?
Yeah.
Okay, move by Kendra, I'll second it. Jeff, you weren't here. Any changes or updates to those minutes? All right, Kendra? Yes?
Yes.
Jeff will abstain. Yes, from me, Andy?
Yes.
Okay, and that's January 4th.
I was not there.
Move approved. Move by Jeff, seconded by Zach. All right, any changes? Okay, all in favor, Kendra? You weren't here. Stention, Jeff?
Yes.
Myself, yes, Andy?
Yes.
Okay. Last one's going to be minutes of January 18th. Move to approve. Move by Jeff.
Second.
Second by Kendra. Any changes or updates? All in favor, Kendra?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Myself, yes, Andy?
Yes.
All right, that wipes out minutes. Okay, public comments again. Folks, because we are running a tight, err, schedule time, we want to get as much stuff done as we can while Jeff is here. I'm going to actually, in the past, we've always had a three-minute rule. We've really always been loose with that. I'm going to try to hold firm to that, so if everybody can try to keep their remarks to three minutes, it would be appreciated. Jeff's going to be running the timer, and when we hear a beep, we can try to wrap something up in a couple of seconds. That would be great. Okay? So, public comments from anybody in the room? Saying yes, no, somebody? Kevin?
Evening. Kevin Burwell, Karen Road. I'd like to begin my remarks by, once again, inviting you to the panel discussion question and answer event next Tuesday, 6:30 PM, George B. White Building. To have any questions you may have answered, and to increase your general knowledge on the topic. As a reminder, the New Hampshire Commissioner of Education, a New Hampshire State Board of Education, and Representative Cordelli will comprise our esteemed panel. If you can each attend. Deerfield wants expanded school choice, right? You know it, I know it, everyone knows it. You're elected to conduct the whole of the people, and yet you propose an unprecedented 12- to 20-year high school contract that will lock out any school choice for Deerfield students for more than a generation. For me, that's a shame and a disservice to the community. It's a little bit like Lucy, right? She puts the ball there, and she promises to hold it, and soon before Charlie Brown comes running down the field with a big happy smile, ball's gone, and he's back on his back. It's a little unfortunate. Stop me if you've heard this one before. We have to listen to our experts, right? We have to take the expert advice, the advice of our experts. And a few years back, the district, the SAU, chose to hire curriculum coordinator at a Manchester School District, and we proposed a new curriculum for math at Deerfield Community School. I spoke against that program. It was already a demonstrable failure in Manchester, and why we would hire somebody from Manchester to then bring that same program here. And now, from what I understand, the proof is finally in the pudding, and yeah, that program is still a failure. So I still don't understand why we won't reject the Common Core standards, reject pace, go back to what we know works. We had increasing academic scores, increasing academic performance year on year on year, and then the core came in, and it's been going in the toilet ever since. It's just food for thought, rhetorical question. Got a nice mailer from the town this week. It was nice. I couldn't help notice, though, that y'all chose not to include your recommendation or the NBC's recommendation on question four, the proposed high school contract. Going off memory, I believe the recommendation from the NBC was five in favor, five against that contract. It's interesting to note that accepting petitioned warrant articles, that's really the only question that you guys chose not to publish recommendation. I, for one, and sure I'm not alone, read into that fact that the Deerfield School Board is either split on the question and doesn't want the voting public to know that, or none of you support it. So, yeah, so, you know, it's a bad contract that the voters voted down so that we can come back with the school choice that so many families need, want, and deserve. Thank you.
Just more comments from anybody else?
Hi, I'm Bobby Anne Dostie from Brown Road. I wanted to thank Zach's wife, if you could relay the message, for reaching out to him.
We don't talk much. I'm always here.
I said, thank you for reaching out because she did verify that there is way less confusion with the Concord intake forms this year. I know last, yeah, last, last year, feels like forever ago. Last year, there was a lot of confusion with people filling out the Concord High intake forms because it said that there was a transportation fee. They don't have that anymore, and it does specify his wife reached out. So thank you. I also want to thank you from the bottom of my heart for listening to the math department the other day. I know a lot of kids had a lot of problems with Eureka, as well as seeing the teachers' reactions to it during the middle school years. Just because Concord High uses Eureka doesn't mean we can't be better than them. So I really appreciate you listening to the math department. They, they're awesome, so I want to thank you for that, and thank you for your time.
Anybody else? Okay? Okay.
Good evening. My name is Mary Ann Clark. I just took a little bit of background. Some of you know me, some of you don't. I served six years on the Deerfield School Board, elected to two terms. One of the things that I'm quite proud of that we did is we renegotiated the contract with Concord, and there were a lot of changes we made. I appreciate seeing the changes you folks have made in it as well, and the improvements. And I do want to let you know, my primary reason for coming is to thank you for the work that you've done on that. I really appreciate it. I disagree very strongly with what Kevin said about everyone knowing that school choice is what everyone wants. The people that I know in town, a lot of the people that I know in town, don't feel the same way. So we appreciate what you've done. And the other thing that I wanted to mention about this is that, actually, two things. One is that I think we really, we really need to educate some people about the costs that are going to be associated with school choice. And that is something I don't see a lot of about. I'd be happy to talk to anybody about what I see as the cost of that because I was the one who devised the formula that we use at Concord. The other thing that I am concerned about with school choice is the disinformation that I see in the community around it. The, I am particularly concerned about the hacking away at Concord High School. Concord High School gives a quality education to our students. And that's that. I can talk about that as well. I only have three minutes, otherwise I'd sit here all night. So I did want to say, thank you for that, and have a good night.
Anybody else? All right, we can move on. Let's see. General review, I didn't have any changes to make. I guess we should just know Nate came in at about 6:08 or so, I don't think I can forget the minutes. Nate, we did already approve the previous minutes. Andy is remote, just so you're aware. We made the motion to allow remote participation, so I think that's cut you out. As far as correspondence goes, I don't believe, and I apologize, I've been a little behind on emails. I had some, I've been involving things, I've had to take care of over the last couple of weeks. But I don't recall missing any emails that were addressed to the entire board, but I will, next day or two, go through them and see if I found any. As far as review on the agenda, I don't have any changes. Any of you board members have anything you want to add, make tweak to, adjust to the agenda? Okay.
I didn't know if you wanted to review the social media policy and potential Facebook group page. So policies on, oh, perfect, on under, yeah, under six, last one.
So we can pull that up and tackle it as best as possible tonight. Nate, one other note is we have Jeff till seven, so we're trying to roll through what we can, what we have. All right. I don't see Chris at the moment, so.
I have information if you'd like.
You, okay, I'm sorry. Let's fire it.
Um, I just, really, the only two things are the Citywide Facility Solutions came in. I think Patty wants to take a look at what we have available in our budget. I'm pretty sure we can, we can, we can.
Amber was able to check this afternoon, I'm not going to tell you that, so yeah, we're good.
Yep, so, gentleman from Citywide Facility Solutions came, I guess, one day last week, and met with Chris. They went over the entire building to figure out what, how, you know, to put a proposal together. This booklet is their proposal, very professionally done. Basically, they'll charge $152 a day to send two or three folks in to help support the current custodial staff in the evenings. Chris has figured out, over the course of February, March, April, May, and June, it will be a total of about $12,920. He did request the gentleman to come back and look at two more areas of the school, if he could add that on, but he didn't have the updated proposals for that, so.
So are we being asked to act on this tonight, or is this kind of informational update?
If you're comfortable acting on it, Chris has been working double shifts.
I know Chris is killing himself, and certainly, we can't find him help, so we need to try to buy him help, I guess, if he does what he wants.
The issue too was if you don't take action tonight, they have to be fingerprinted and background checked. We can't take the background report from their company, it has to be done through us.
And so this is where, where down, how many janitorials?
We're down of, basically, a full-time day, and then two full-time evening people.
So from a cost standpoint, this isn't going to cost us anything, we're shell done.
No, for the rest, to get through the rest of the year, you've got enough surplus in the salaries that we're not paying to cover this.
Okay, so, does anybody want to tackle this and dispose of it tonight, so that you can get Chris started on having some help to keep the building clean?
I'm, I'm sure, this is the first time I've heard about it, so I'd love the information, but. Essentially, it's a third-party janitorial service, so they come in, and their rate seems incredibly cheap. You said $152 a day? So it was, that's for two people, I mean, six-hour day, that's $12.60 an hour.
Yeah, it may not be for a full six hours, but I mean, it's whatever they're discussing, whatever that scope orders.
Right.
So if they're accomplishing the scope, what?
Four hours, it's $19.00. Yeah. We did an RFP for this, and this is $12,000, that falls under the, he's honored.
He, we would just be hiring them, it wouldn't be just a $12,000 contract. It would just be hiring the company at their hourly rate, and ask the estimate of what this will cost the rest of the year. So it's contracting the service instead of paying the employees.
So I'm sure.
We had students helping, Mrs. Woody was sweeping, Mr. Greve was cleaning, so it's pretty, it's pretty dire. This has been going on for months.
Chris has been doing double time, triple time, trying to keep up with the goals, right?
How does this compare to what we would be paying, if we could hire these people?
I don't have the printout with me that I can get at the next meeting, sorry, Amber looked it up.
Reasonably comparable.
Yeah, if you, if you take the surplus in the salary, and there was another position we were never even able to fill in the first place, if you take the salary and VICA and all the associated benefits, there was enough to cover, more than enough to cover this.
Making motion to approve, sending the company, Citywide?
Citywide, leading solutions.
If you want to take a look at this, this is the proposal that we're together.
All right, we have a motion by Jeff, seconded by Kendra. As far as additional discussion goes, obviously, finding labor has been a challenge. They still need to get fingerprinted, and they have to go through that process, which is going to take probably a couple of weeks.
Hopefully, it's not too far behind right now because it's not the prime hiring season, so hopefully, the background checks will come back.
Okay.
Do we have any information from the company about how their staffing is? Like, is there any concern that they're not going to be able to have staff? Just met with them, so.
I think so. He was, he had two people ready to go. I don't know how they do it, but they do.
I suspect we're contracting if it will anyway, so if it doesn't work, we.
Right, it's a nine, I think it's a 90-day thing, and I think there's a fee if we pull out beforehand, but, I mean, it just, it would be.
Yeah. Dire.
Our students are different, Kendra, it's all right.
We currently have child.
That's true.
Everybody's been amazing, but it really can't.
Parents have reached, literally, they're like, if you need any help, let us know. Seventh graders have said to me, can we stay after school and help? I mean, it's, it's been, it's definitely been a community effort to keep, keep everything going, but it's not, we're not deep cleaning. I mean, I dry mop, and that's not my specialty, so did the best I could.
So we have a motion, a second on the table, why don't we act on it? If anybody's come for any additional questions, all right, Kendra?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Myself, yes, Nate? Andy?
Yes, aye.
All right.
And then one other thing, Chris said that they have about seven bids for the roof, so that's good, thank you.
Awesome. Do you know what day that was closing?
Today.
Closed today, so they'll review and then bring information to us. So is that something, next meeting is really a work session, more so than anything else, but do we want to put that on for next meeting to try to discuss an award, so we get on the schedule right away?
I'll let them know.
Can we get tally sheets at a minimum?
It's, yeah, just to be clear, the RFP was not low bidder. It was most qualified, so.
But I'd certainly like to start seeing tally sheets.
Do you want, do you want a board member to participate in the review process of the, of the bids?
The most qualified?
No.
And it's not Jeff, so that leaves me. So I would say, let's, let, Chris has been the most in-depth, but if he needs help, have him call me.
Okay.
Or I can at least review it with him. Does that work for everybody?
Yes.
Okay. All right. That's good, we got a wide range of bidders, okay? Anything else facilities-wise? Okay, that brings us to the reason why town moderator is here, Mr. Olavich. We are going to do our annual review of warrant articles with Dan. Which, let me get in front of him. There they are, all right. So, Dan, every year, oh, I said Dan, the town moderator historically, every year, has come before us.
School moderator.
School moderator. Has come before us prior to deliberative sessions, just to kind of review the warrant articles, ask questions. We typically will, for the lead of the discussion, kind of item up amongst the board members so that everybody has a little bit of time to discuss items and whatnot. So, with that being said, how do you want to handle this, Dan, in the past? Or do you want me to just go, or?
All right, my friend.
All right, great. Okay, so, good evening, everyone. Deanna Holgerich, your school district moderator, also your town moderator. We have our town deliberative session this Saturday, so I hope everyone can come to that. That's 9:00 AM at our town hall, and then the school district's deliberative session will be the following Saturday, the 11th. Also at 9:00 AM, that's going to be here. We'd like to just do an annual review of the warrant articles that are here, and then identify our school board members that would like to present the articles on behalf of the school board for those that are not petitioned by a citizen of our community. And so, and then if you have any questions or concerns as we go through them, I'll just be brief with it. I know you've got a busy schedule tonight. So, again, the purpose of a deliberative session is to bring the community together, give an opportunity to visit on the warrant articles. Warrant coming from the word of warning, so you're letting warning the community know what's about to go on with, whether it be funding, or what have you, and on the importance of business of the community. So with that in mind, there are certain warrant articles that can be changed, some can't be. But it would be, it would say it right on, right on this, right on the documents itself, if there's anything that cannot be changed. And for the most part, some can be, motions can be made to make adjustments to it. So with that in mind, the first warrant article is, is obviously for the budget, the operating budget. So, school board members, which, which person would like to speak on that?
Yeah, I suspect, I suspect that will land on me.
Okay.
Is that work for everybody?
Yeah, I agree.
All right.
Okay, so, how it will work, we'll introduce the warrant article, and then I'll introduce you to, to introduce the warrant, answer any, you know, discuss what it means to the school board or what have you, and then open it up for the community to ask questions. And although you're not required to respond, you're welcome to answer questions to the community. Okay, the second one is the school, Deerfield School District voting to approve the cost items set forth in a collective bargaining agreement. So who would like to speak on that?
That's going to be me.
Okay. Okay, very good. And I'll do three as well, okay? Okay, that one was, how should we defeat? Okay, number four is, district approved, subjective approval of the State Board of Education for some contract. 194, so that'd be the school contract. So, number four, who would like to present that?
Back to Nate.
I would, Nate or myself would be the one, so what do you guys want to do?
Leave it up to you. You both are involved.
Yeah. What do you want to do, Mr. Nate? I suspect there's going to be discussion revolving around, what do you think? All right, we'll spearhead it, let it go where it goes, all right?
I was going to say, and you're welcome to, you know, once you finish, I'll add anything that you want to.
I'm sure there'll be a conversation.
Sure, I mean, the goal is to just get as much information as we can out to the community so that they can make good decisions when it comes to March 14th, which is the voting day. And then number five will be the building renovation and site improvement fund.
That's going to, that's going to land on Jeff's shoulders.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, number six is the raising the funds for the school facilities repair trust fund.
I'll give it back. Feel like we can evolve our friend Kendra here. Kendra, you want number seven?
Sure.
Special education. Okay. Probably asked us, is there any board or something that's not going to be available on the 11th?
Andy, I believe, will be out of town still on the 11th, Andy?
That's correct.
Okay, so it's going to be.
No signing in.
Yeah, we are, he's off the hook.
Very good, okay.
And number eight?
Number eight would be the school facility paving trust fund. Who would like to speak on that?
I can also do that.
Kendra?
Okay, number nine is, and that's the.
No, no.
No, that's the SP2.
On SP2.
Yep.
I feel like I'm the one that brought that to the board and kind of kicked it off, so I'm certainly willing to support it. Please discuss it.
All right.
I think that's all right with everybody else. Okay?
Okay.
I believe we're on to petitions, Dan.
And then the 10 would be the, yeah, petitioners.
And so 10 and 11 were both of them by petitioners. So as petitioners, it would be appropriate in that case for the petitioners.
Petitioners that speak on behalf of.
So speaking beside that, so.
So, you may have sent a tweet, Patty Duke, whoever submitted those, do we have their contact information?
I have copies.
I just, I reach out to them, let them see if they have questions, and if I can help them in any way, right? And if not, I'm sure they'll visit, I'm probably got it.
I'll email them to you.
Okay, great, great. So that's pretty much it for the warrant articles, so, did anyone have any questions on the morning of the?
Yeah, just with regards to petition warrant articles, are we, as school board members, allowed to ask questions of the petitioners?
Mm-hmm. Your, your, your committee, any men, the rules are, anyone who's a member of our community, a voting member, can speak. And traditionally, we even open it up to folks that are members of the community if they were going to offer some supporting information. Absolutely, everyone is welcome to contribute and share their, share their thoughts.
Was that? You can also propose amendments as school board members.
So I'm sure a voting member of the community, you can, so, we have a procedure for that. We've got little slips in the back that we just ask that if somebody's going to make an amendment, to just write it down on a sheet of paper, so that we can record it on file, so that if it ever, folks ever want to come back and say, how was that written? We have the exact copy of that, so we can issue a review experiment, we get what comes to print. Yeah, that's.
Could you explain a little bit more about which articles can be revised or made a pass for amendment?
So, so, so there's RSAs laws that are, that prohibit the changing of zoning laws. So zoning laws cannot be changed, can be debated and visited one. Like, we have one zoning amendment, I believe, in our town this year. So that one, as it's written, cannot be changed. So things of that nature, there's, there's, if there's contracts, some contracts that indicate that it's, you know, can you vote it on, yes or no, but typically, the contract language can't change.
Got it.
So.
But any of the other ones, mostly, because people can make.
Typically, yeah, it can't, you can't change the intent of it. And so, that's kind of the, there's a Deerfield versus Katie law that was created that, from our town, which is great, and basically define what can and can't be changed in a warrant article. So, so as far as that goes, as long as the overall intent, you can change dollar values, as long as it stays the same.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Dan, while we have him?
Also.
All right, Dan, appreciate you coming up to join us.
You're welcome, and I'll see you, hopefully, see you on Saturday as well, so 9:00 AM at the town hall, and the following Saturday.
And it's going to be cold in the town hall, it'll probably be a little chilly.
We are going to leave the heat on, hopefully, Friday night, so it'll be a little bit warmer when I get there.
If I remember right, was it negative 10 or 20, anything I heard, or weekend?
Ah, minus 15 or somewhere.
So you may want to wear two coats on Saturday.
Two coats on Saturday.
And a pair of gloves.
But we'll try and get warm, and if we have enough good discussion, I'm sure that'll warm it up a little bit.
That, that room is always cold.
Yeah, like I said, we're going to leave the heat on the night before, so that encourages folks to come.
You may want to turn it off tonight. All right.
All right, good night, everyone.
Thank you very much, Dan.
Take care.
Yep.
Okay, public hearing, RMGs, public hearing for the.
Yes.
Go ahead.
So we have, we have a public hearing that needs to be held when you're considering rescinding what's known as SB2. So we have scheduled that, put that in the paper, and that will happen at your next meeting. And the intention is also to have the public hearing on the same night for your, to withdraw the funds from the trust fund for a septic replacement. Probably can schedule one, do it both the same night, and you'll be able to hear, speak to the warrant and hear the public input.
Now, that will occur effectively at the start of the meeting, but technically, it's before the meeting, and I will call when people order out.
And it's the reason it's, the reason it was scheduled when it was, is by statute, it's required to be at least 15 days, but not more than 30 days. You have to hold a public hearing.
For the undoing of SB2?
For that, yeah.
Okay.
And the town is, I know, taking similar action because they have a kind of a hearing warrant article as well, so there'll be a public hearing scheduled. Probably have money to be honest, so. Okay. Any questions from the board regarding the public hearings? Okay. PTO, are we on PTO update? Do we have PTO? Okay. Nate, does the executive board?
We have reports for the.
Monday.
Since the last.
We didn't meet since last meeting.
I think so.
No, okay, I didn't think so, it's, all right. Principals report, but I have something to add for you. The girls team lost the basketball game 25 to 26. Just popped up on the lot, so, sorry, everybody, if you were waiting for the results of that game, they lost.
They won the last game by.
They won last night, yes.
And they won the last, the episode game.
And for what it's worth, my daughter scored at least two points according to the. Just so you know.
Thank goodness.
All right.
Because bigs don't always score, you know?
Yes, yes, all right, go ahead.
All right, so this covers January 5th through February 1st. Just going to mention that the girls and boys' basketball season is coming to an end. So they're not in the play, are the girls in the playoffs?
I believe they're still in the playoffs.
Okay, boys, yeah, and.
I'll get the update when I get home.
On January 9th, our grades one through four had a wonderful winter concert, it was a big success, and it was wonderful. On January ninth, our grades one through four had a wonderful winter concert, it was a big success, and it was wonderful having families in the building. And our kids loved, um, singing and performing for our families. Friday, January thirteenth, um, I don't know if you know that January sixteenth is Appreciate a Dragon Day. But our wonderful PTO put together a packet of dragons for, um, for students to color and staff. And with a little sentence started that says, the DCS dragon I appreciate is dot, 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 and I appreciate them because dot, dot, dot. So as you walk around the room, some, a lot of, of the building, a lot of them might have been taken down by now and hand delivered to people. This one was still on the wall, um, it's the DCS dragon I appreciate is Mrs. Withy. And she, he appreciates me because I love him and I am the goat. So, um, for anybody who doesn't know what the goat is, that is the greatest of all time, so, um, move over, Tom, I'm, uh, the new goat is in the house. So I, it was a wonderful, it was so much fun seeing the, uh, the, the appreciated dragons all over the building. We did it on Friday because Monday was, um, Civil Rights Day, so, uh, it was a, was a wonderful activity and appreciate the PTO for even thinking of that. The All Holidays Middle School Dance was sponsored by the Kindness Magnet, um, and also that Friday the thirteenth. Our professional day on Monday, the twenty-third, was canceled, students didn't have school, so they didn't need to know that school was canceled. But, uh, due to the snow, we did, um, we did cancel the day for teachers as well. The topic that particular day was supposed to be tech track, we did it for the first time last year with Brooke Petroselli and Beth Moshtu. Created a whole day around tech track, uh, that was born out of a meeting with our Critical Friends Group that, uh, Brooke was trying to brainstorm ways that we could, give teachers time to dig into some of the technology tools and learn about them. So Beth and Brooke will present at the March, uh, I think it's March fourteenth, um, which is the SAU PD day, that the whole SAU takes that particular day. We have in the past gotten together as an SAU, but we are not doing that this year. So tech track will be that day, and then the teachers will make up the day that they missed on that Monday at the end of the school year. So students' current last day is, so Friday the sixteenth, uh, we've had three, two snow, three snow days, three snow days, I think. And the teachers will make up that day on Monday, the nineteenth, and they're just thrilled to have to come back on Monday. So barring any more weather events, that could be pushed out a little bit, but for right now, that, those are the current dates. Uh, Tuesday, the twenty-fourth, um, eighth grade parents had a meeting at, at Concord High School. And Wednesday, the twenty-fifth, Mr. Flowers, um, I'm sorry, with Concord High School here at DCS. And then Mr. Flowers came on Wednesday, the twenty-fifth, and met with the eighth grade students to do the, uh, begin the course selection process. On Friday, the twenty-seventh, we had our monthly all-school meeting, and the fifth graders hosted this year, they did a wonderful job. On Tuesday, the thirty-first, we had coaches from Demonstrated Success, as you know, they've been working with our school, uh, coaches have been coming to our school to work on PLCs, which are professional learning communities, um, in our, really a K to eight, with a focus on four to eight, as well as helping us establish a tier one and a tier two-three, um, intervention team. So on the thirty-first, the coaches, the tier one and the tier two-three team members got together, there's about seven or eight on the tier one and about six or seven on the tier two. So we all got together to, uh, just to update each other on what tier one has been working on. Tier one is really developing, um, a, a bank of, and of tier one instructional practices that are expected all throughout this, any classroom that you walk into. And tier two-three has been working on creating intervention banks and what happens when a student is struggling and, um, you know, meeting with this particular, eventually meeting with this team to talk about students that are struggling and what we can do to, what interventions we can put in place to help them. So, um, just, this is, we have to keep reminding ourselves, as you know, Deerfield Community School teachers want, um, to do everything right, and they wanna do it right away. But we remind them, this is really a three to five-year process, and, uh, we're, we're, we're really putting a firm, uh, foundation down as, um, with, with the work that we're doing this year. On PD Wednesday today, our curriculum committee has got a chance to meet, unfortunately, that's the first time this year. But we, we, we try to set a time aside a couple of, a couple of times a year for our curriculum, um, committees to get together. So the PE teams will meet, um, the math, we have a bunch of teachers on the math team, um, committee, the ELA, all, all of the different subjects in the, in the school for people who aren't sure what curriculum committees did. Brooke Petroselli is, uh, the, our chairperson for the CRB this year and has rolled out, um, expectations of what happens during those committee meetings. So today, basically, um, the curriculum, they had to confirm that they were in the correct stage of the cycle. So Chris Mutika, a couple of years ago, created a, um, a curriculum review cycle, so all curriculums in the building are either, um, have either been rolled out. So for example, math last year was updated, so this year they're in a rollout and reflection year. So, uh, they're, they've been tasked with taking a look, is there anything that we, that they missed in the update that they need, that we need to, uh, be thinking about? Or they're in an evaluation, um, cycle, or they're in a mid-cycle review, making preliminary changes, they're in a draft plan, a review plan, or they're finalizing a plan to come to CRB and for board approval. So the, all of the curriculum committees took a look at where they were in that process, um, talked about, uh, determined what they would be needing to accomplish any of the goals that they set, um, in place, whether that was time or people or resources. They also recorded those minutes, um, and put it into a shared folder, so everybody is aware of what's going on with each of the committees. Upcoming on Fri-, this Friday is Career Day for our eighth grade. Um, students, all, all of the magnets, students will get together down in the cafeteria, and Mrs. Swanson and Mr. B have invited, um, folks from the community that come in to talk about all kinds of things, from engines to hairstyles, so, and, uh, different, different jobs that, that they do in the, in the community and beyond. And then Saturday, the eleventh, is the Deerfield deliberative session, and then two last things, the Concord High School contract is on the DCS website. I don't know if it's on the SAU website as well, but it's right on the front page when you go to, if you go to the DCS website, that has been uploaded, um, for folks to take a look at. And, um, I, on a personal note, I would like to thank the Deerfield School Board for the flowers that you've sent on behalf of my father-in-law, passed away, so thank you. Sure you know that I got those, so I appreciate that. And that's all, that's all I got for you.
All right, uh, let's see. CRB, uh, we got updated last time, so we should be good there, right? Right, and RMG hasn't met since, uh, we approved all the budgets, since we made the tech. That brings us to policies. Policies, all right.
So the first policy, BEDH, you had, um, made some suggestions for changes at a prior meeting, and those were all made and should have been that we updated that copy in your drive. So, um, you, just a reminder, you decided to do for public comments, fifteen at the beginning and fifteen at the end. So you chose to split it up, and then you took out some optional paragraphs. I think those were the only changes.
Move policy BEDH second.
Moved in second, additional discussion regarding policy. Uh, I'm sorry, moved by Nate, seconded by Jeff. Moved by Nate, seconded by Jeff.
There was one of them with blank, that was another, I just looked at it, and I think it said, um, duration maximum, I would say three minutes. I forget where it is, but I find it.
That's okay, I'll make a note.
It was second page, paragraph B, note four.
Oh, it's a fairly, uh, I think it said note four.
Three?
Three.
Three.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you, sorry I missed that.
Okay, additional discussion regarding, uh, policy BEDH. All in favor, Kendra?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Myself, yes, Nate?
Aye.
Andy?
Yes, aye.
Okay. That takes care of BEDH, that brings us to EBB. Just EBB, okay.
I don't think we received any changes or suggested language on this one, it's pretty prescribed by law. The only thing that we need to do is if you don't have a policy, we usually strike that from being mentioned, if you don't have it.
That's still my question, so all those that are on there, we do have.
No, they'll be struck if you don't, yes. If it references a policy you don't have, it's typically an optional policy that you may or may not have, and if you don't have it, we just remove that reference.
No, just have the app remove it, if we prove it, you know.
Yeah, 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 we'll just take that out, yeah.
I'll move EBB.
Motion move EBB by Nate, seconded by Jeff, additional discussion regarding EBB.
I just had a quick, uh, clarification question. I think we, we had a, we had a previous, uh, school safety policy, is this replacing that, or is this just updating, uh, what we already had in place?
It doesn't replace your school, your emergency operations plan, it just is an updated school board policy.
Okay.
So there's two separate things, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
All right. Additional discussion. All in favor, Kendra?
Aye.
Jeff?
Yes.
Myself, yes, Nate?
Aye.
And Andy?
Yes, aye.
Okay. That takes care of EBB. Next is E-
EBD.
EB, EBBD. Indoor air quality.
Yes, so, um, there was a revision, this is a priority required by law policy, there was a revision in August of twenty-two in the water quality and access, um, reflective to the, um, the new statute on lead in drinking water, so that requires a revision to the policy. Um, and we've simply included the language that the school board association recommended on that.
Which is the board?
Um, I'm with the PTO.
Second, moved by Nate, seconded by Jeff, additional discussion.
Yes.
Yes, go ahead.
There's a spot where it asks for a, um, cost of repairs below which the superintendent can, um, make to say, you know, choose to proceed. And I would, I would, uh-
It's right.
Propose or move or amend that to five thousand dollars as a limit.
That was, that was the very last sentence. Yeah.
Everybody comfortable with that amendment?
Is that a common value, I mean, like, is, five thousand, is it, is it cut off for RFP as well, right?
Yeah, it's typically five or ten, so, yeah. It's typically not gonna be an emergency that has to be acted on within two weeks.
All in favor of EBB, sorry, do we have a motion?
Yes.
All in favor of EBB as amended, Kendra?
Aye.
Jeff? Myself, aye, Nate?
Aye.
Andy?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
I did have a question about that, if, uh, if I could.
Sure.
It, uh, slightly relates to the, uh, potential future facility project that we're gonna undertake, uh, replacing the, uh, wall units in the classrooms. Uh, it ties back into the indoor air quali-, uh, quality piece. Have we thought of, or will we include some sort of HEPA filters or anything along those lines when we start to go down that path? And does that tie back to this indoor air quality thing?
Indoor air quality, I believe is more about emissions than I have, if I'm correct, yeah. Not air, air monitoring, I get why you'd ask that, but.
So, so I think to answer your question, Andy, is whatever, when that project gets going, I think whatever's put in place is gonna update significantly what we currently have. How it impacts this policy, I don't necessarily know if that ties back into this, per se.
Okay.
All right. All right. That brings us to EHAB data insecurity.
So. So Josh did, um, review this policy when the new policy came out to make sure that our, um, plans were in line with this and nothing significant. Again, this was another August twenty-twenty-two legislative change, uh, there was a new, um, RSA applicable to school districts as political subdivisions of the state. So it, it's regarding cybersecurity incidents, data breaches, um, and updated legal references, so that was pretty much the only thing that changed. And the only thing blank that I have to fix is we don't have an assistant director of technology, so, um, it's typically the business administrator. It's there, and I forgot to fill that blank in.
Everybody up there with that?
That's page three. Yes.
Okay.
And that was my only question, was the title of whoever it's-
Yeah, there's no assistant, so it usually ends up being the business administrator.
So it would be Director of IT for the first one, and then the business administrator for the second one.
Yeah.
All right, uh, so.
We've all moved to second.
Jeff? Additional discussion? All in favor, Kendra?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
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 And Andy?
Uh, yes.
Okay, here, making progress, folks.
Good.
We've pushed these a couple of times, so it's a night to kill. All right, uh, EHAB?
Yeah, so again, that's a priority required by law, and again, that was a result of the legislative session change, there was a change, um, just this past summer, August twenty-twenty-two. Clarifying, um, destruction of records and district, the district record retention schedules. So, um, this policy is more general, and it, it does talk about, you know, if you, if there's a litigation or request, you don't destroy, you ever, never destroy any records that might be related to that request, and then it references your records retention policy, which you already have in place, and that's very prescriptive about, you know, how long do you have to keep personnel files, how long do you have to keep student records, transcripts, it's a very big one, that, that-
That sounds like fun.
Determines how long we have to keep everything, so.
Move to approve. Oh, you're messing up the minutes, Jeff, motion by Jeff, anybody want to second it?
Second.
Sorry, Trish. All right, we have a motion by Jeff, seconded by Kendra, additional discussion. All right, uh, all in favor, Kendra?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
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 Nate?
Uh, yes.
Okay. Andy sounds like a pirate every time. What does that bring us, IHB, where do they come up with this? IHBAA.
Um, so this is for evaluation requirements for children with specific learning disabilities. Um, and this just clarified the options that the district has when you're determining if a child has a specific learning disability. So at the bottom of page one, which is actually the first paragraph, the district may choose to use either model or both models. So, um, I think we discussed it at a, at a prior meeting that, that we would choose one or the other, that we would like to keep both on here, and that we do choose, we do look at both. So we don't, yes, for the folks though, exactly.
Move to approve.
Hey, second, moved by Nate, seconded by Jeff, additional discussion. All in favor, Kendra?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Myself, aye.
Aye.
And Andy?
Yes, aye.
Okay. Where are we now, we are on JJJ.
Yes, so there were some pretty substantive changes, um, this is access to public school programs by non-public charter school and home educated pupils. Lots of clarifications, um, to make sure that there's equal access, um, to those students in that category, in those categories, um, for programs act, in activities in a public school. And that's a priority required by law.
Which is the board? Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Nate, seconded by Jeff, additional discussion.
The special editor, I think it just says the title of the person, that's our title.
That's it, it works, we, you have to have a special editor, our just, our assistant superintendent happens to fill that role, so, I think it's okay.
All in favor, Kendra?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Myself, aye, Nate?
Aye.
And Andy?
Uh, yes.
And that brings us from JJJ to J, well, I haven't said it yet, JLCF.
Um, I don't believe we shared this, I thought of this today, I don't think we share, ever shared this with Meredith, the wellness policy, did we? Did this to her to review, because there's some, yeah, I'm, I would like to hold, because there's some specific-
We're gonna push JLCF.
Yeah, I was gonna say, do you have any input to this before we share it with Meredith?
Okay, Nate, go ahead.
First off, there's one option there, water, I would assume the answer would be for, for school, they could do that.
Yes, yes, absolutely, access to water, yes.
Awesome. And then under rule number four, physical activity, wanted to propose, um, an adjustment or amendment. And part of this is I, I would be looking for input next meeting from, um, Amy Schreiber. First off, um, under A, it asks for a time for, um, physical, regular physical movement, and I would opt to agree to buy that next, that's sort of, comes for A.
For A, and what letter are you on, A?
Yeah, for A, there's a three to five minutes.
The top of the next page, yes, and you would, you would add page four?
Yeah, three to five minutes, I think it's.
Oh, the one is already there, okay.
I would be, if there are other ideas, then I'd be open to those. The difference is I would add a, um, letter D. And I'm, this is a proposed amendment that, I didn't, I just, I was looking at this today, so I, I didn't send it ahead of time.
Sure.
But if, there's two sentences here. D would be recess. And my amendment at the moment would read this, the district will include at least one recess for all K to eight students in the daily schedule, not less than twenty minutes at a time. This recess period will not be subject to withholding for academic or disciplinary reasons.
So let's say that again, at least one recess for every-
Every student.
K to eight student.
K to eight students daily, not less than twenty minutes.
So. I love that, but I will just caution you that we would need to change our school day because of our instructional hours, you can't, unfortunately, can't count recess beyond sixth grade towards your instructional minutes.
Right.
Um, so, we can do that calculation and just come back and let you know, okay, we would, this would be extending the day to.
Or extend the year, the year one day.
This many minutes or a year adding a day on or something, whatever it ends up being.
Or could it be proactive for next year, or something, or pro way to, or whatever the word would be, to say, going to.
Yes, I, we could, we'll calculate it, and that way you can, you send me that, though, I.
Could.
Yeah.
I hope Trish got it all, but I didn't know.
Where it impacts is the middle school schedule.
Yes, beyond sixth grade, yeah.
So. What the middle school. Yeah, sixth, I was gonna say, sixth grade, the schedule for sixth grade mirrors the seventh day schedules. So it would just be how, how that works.
Yeah.
And I think it's, it's been a good idea for us to figure out what.
Yeah.
I will say the second sentence is a little duplicative to the first paragraph, which says that physical activity during the day will not be withheld as punishment for any reason.
Uh, that's, I missed that one, that's in the first paragraph?
It's right under physical activity and above A.
Okay. Physical activity will not be withheld for any reason?
Yeah, so physical activity during the school day, including but not limited to recess, classroom, physical activity breaks, or physical education, will not be withheld as punishment for any reason.
And I think that could be construed to say that physical edu-, like the P E class will not be withheld. And as long as you're not withholding the P E class, then recess could be withheld, right, says including.
Yeah, it says including, but not limited to, yeah, recess, the recess, classroom, physical activity breaks, or P E, none of those can.
And, but you said at the moment we don't have recess for those classes.
Correct, right, so I think we should still add recess.
Yeah, you would add the recess piece, yes, but not have to add the.
And then. I see what you're saying, but then we have to have that.
Yes, that it doesn't mean withheld, yeah.
Okay.
We do have recess, we do have recess from middle school, it's just not twenty minutes, it's, yeah, about between ten and fifteen minutes.
Every day?
Every day.
Okay, so.
I think I had, okay, that's.
So I think, I think, I think the spirit, I think the spirit of what Nate's trying to figure out is to ensure that every student has an opportunity to get outside of their.
And it's not withheld, and it's, right, so it just becomes.
Co-ified.
So what was your proposal for how many minutes?
Oh, I'm flexible, I said twenty minutes, but I'm flexible, like fifteen.
Okay, so it, we'll just, okay, we'll talk about that Friday morning.
Maybe it's for you guys, just take a look at that, that, a lot incorporates in the schedule and slips on my, gotcha. Does that work, everybody, everybody happy?
Um, the only other question I had is, you know, with funding for school meals having changed after COVID and all of that. You know, under section A on page four, are accessible to all students, and I know that we don't deny students meals if there's a deficit, but could we? Put it in writing and make it explicit, you know, and.
I think that's in a different policy, I think that's in your school meal, there's a separate policy for that.
Okay.
I'll make sure, but I know we've talked about it. And I'll look for it to make sure I'm correct.
Alright, so we're gonna table J L C F for future discussion. Agreed?
Agreed.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, so that brings us to J L D B B, almost at the end here, folks.
Okay, and that is the suicide prevention and response, correct? I think there was, I think that was another August, that was another legislative update from August. Um, and that was to reflect the passage of the Jason Dickey Suicide Prevention Act, which was RSA one ninety-three. That requires the National Suicide Prevention Lifeline to be included on student I T cards, probably heard about that.
Alright, which is the board?
I'll move J L D B B, second.
Moved by Nate, seconded by Jeff, additional discussion. All in favor, Kendra?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Myself, aye, Nate?
Aye.
And Andy?
Uh, yes.
Okay, the last one we have is policy K V, which is the first reading, so we're not gonna be acting on it, we're in a discussion.
Yep, so K V, K D is your.
Sorry, can I say K?
I don't know, I did. Um, is your school district social media um policy, and we added that because you had been talking about a school board Facebook page.
This has been ultimately, the goal is just to be able to set it up so that the school has, I'm not a Facebook person.
Yes. So Josh did create um a, an email address that is not going to be active or used, um, but it's an email address so that it doesn't go on anyone's personal email. So when you sign up for the Deerfield School Board Facebook page, you'll enter this email address as the email. Associated with the um.
So, so can we do that currently, is there a reason, so can we create that?
Yeah, you can do it, um, I just wanted to make sure that we talked about it at a board meeting after he set that up, I didn't wanna just. Go launch, go tell someone to launch without, without a conversation, and I think we talked about the K V policy. Um, you know, you can limit public comments, I think we talked about turning public comments off, that it would just specifically be for informational purposes.
Need to help that out.
Post your agendas, post your minutes, and then I think trying that out, see how it goes, and then if there's other things that the board wants to use for, have that conversation here.
Okay.
Look at the policy, make sure whatever you're proposing doesn't violate that.
So, I think the first step would be is we need to assign a board member that role.
And I would suggest two members and two people always having the passwords, just in case.
Not me, ever, uh, cause I don't like Facebook, so Kendra has, has taken up the mantle of communications attaché. And Nate, make him run second. Does that work for everybody?
Yes.
Everybody's happy, that doesn't require necessarily a motion, does it?
Um, I probably would do that, just to have it in the minutes.
But for motion to appoint Kendra as the communications Facebook uh board member with Nate as the secondary. And I'll, I'll second that, additional discussion. Alright, all in favor, Kendra, vote for yourself.
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Myself, aye, Nate?
Aye.
Andy?
Yes, aye.
Alright.
Just wanna protect our friends Kendra and Nate if someone in the future says, these people have a Facebook page, you know, but in the minutes, it was approved, it didn't go rogue, anything crazy.
It sounds like nothing's posted, so the next meeting, is that correct, or am I saying it's?
I think it's okay to say, yeah, you can set it up, and then maybe when the approved minutes are ready, you could post, put those up and put the next agenda up. Get the word, maybe once it's all set, and since we need to put it in the bridge to let people know it's been created and to look for it.
Anything that keeps me away from Facebook, including that. Alright. So, that brings us to, we uh, wow, I guess we'll listen, Jeff.
That was a good timing, thank you.
Jeff, thank you for your time tonight, uh, so Trish, can you just denote um six fifty-eight, Jeff, vote for meeting for the minutes, please? Thank you. And we're wrapping it up anyway, informational items, I don't have anything.
Can I throw an out there?
You, sir, cancer. Uh, actually, and we do have maybe something, alright, go ahead.
The um, I was wondering whether maybe on a next agenda, you, you just said it was a work session, which makes sense, but maybe a goal review, check in? Would that be worth tackling before the end of the?
Group?
Yeah, electoral year, whatever you call it.
Do we already, so we're doing the public hearings?
We're doing the goal hearing, we're doing the goal review. I think we need to talk about um. Uh, what we want to. Do, just for getting uh pushing information regarding another kind of round on how we want to get information out, and what information we're gonna start using, we're waiting for K to respond back on those posts. So we're gonna have that conversation. Um, and then we were going to do the uh Q and A regarding the Concord contract.
That's March seven.
Do we have that, March seven?
March seven.
Yeah, I think it's March seven.
Did I get my date wrong, I'm sorry?
I think you did.
Alright.
I'm pretty sure that was the.
What's voting due at twelve?
Fourteen.
Fourteenth. So I kinda think, I kinda think we should have a, I think the seventh is pushing it.
Yes, Kathy.
Okay, thank you.
That, that's, uh, so, we had, um, I guess this comes on informational, we, we did have a date, the Concord was gonna host a community night, you have that handy?
Twenty-first.
Oh, February?
I believe.
So we should. Obviously.
Yes, and they're, they're going to get us something to send out.
Okay.
For which.
So.
I know they called Candy and talked to her about how that would happen.
So do we, do we wanna wait on that kind of contract conversation from March seventh, or do we wanna have an open? Public hearings and open forum and everything regarding the contract on that side?
Well, if we do that, then that might cause some attention, and then maybe we'll be curious to go to Concord on the twenty-first, to go.
Yeah, well, if, and if we feel like we wanna do it again, we can certainly do it again.
So if you do that, though, you're gonna have two public hearings that night. One for the septic, one for the warrant article. Goal review. That's a lot of public.
Well, the goal review is.
Attendance and not that part, but I just, you just wanna tackle that all in one night, that's my question.
Rather than trying to get people out, getting all.
Just do it all at once.
Yeah, just have a party. Right? Would I agree with that? We'll work the agenda out that way. Um, alright, so with that being said, so we'll, we'll do that, if anybody else has any other ideas. Drew Mover, as far as February twenty-first goes, we, we did ask Concord, and if I can get kind of a real quick synopsis, there'll be information going on publicly, but. Concord's gonna have a kind of a community night for anybody from Deerfield that wants to come see Concord High School, wander about. We're kinda, I guess they're working on the format for us, but they're gonna host our community uh to go see what, what they are, and what they do, and everything, so.
And this is not like specifically targeted at like the eighth graders, everyone.
This is, this is from the youngest to the oldest, uh, dragons and Deerfieldians and, and everybody else involved, so it, it's a good opportunity for people to see what Concord really is, rather than. What they hear and read on necessarily the internet, they should go over there and see what they do, because they do a lot with Instagram kids.
You know whether they're enlisting Deerfield High School students?
They're, yes, they're getting, they're gonna have, yep, they're gonna have students, add, they've got tons of people that are willing to stay that night to.
Now.
Be part of it.
Um, from a logistics standpoint, do we, if there's a quorum of board members there, do we need to post it as a meeting, because we're all gonna be in one spot?
You're not, as, as long as you're not planning, you know, planning to get together and do any business.
We're not doing anything. Listen, I just don't wanna hear it.
I will not speak to you. You can speak at a social gathering, it's not to board business.
I will tell you. I've been sitting here long enough, I get most of the town to not speak to me, so. Alright, uh.
Do we have confirmed time, is it sixty-eight?
I don't think I've had the.
Okay.
I haven't seen a flyer or anything.
So, so the good news is, is for those people that use the Facebook, there will be posts coming out about it on the Facebook, from our Facebook person.
Yes.
The Facebook.
Maybe even an event.
MySpace, do we use MySpace, can we do that?
No.
Alright. Um, so there'll be more information, obviously, we'll get it out as soon as we uh, we've just pinned down the rest of the details, finding a date that worked for Concord and us, and. S U schedules, our schedules, their schedules is a bit of a challenge, so I think, uh, I think they may be, it's jogging on there to make it work. But it'd be great for the, uh, turn off in the community to see what they, they have to offer, um, and to kinda see what it's all about, because. A lot of people have an opinion on that particular school and have never stepped foot in it, so why don't we, why don't we go see what, see, why don't, why don't we let the community go see what's up?
Is that also something, I don't, I don't know, it's not specifically related to a warrant article, but is it something we can mention at the deliberative?
Yes, there's a reason why not, right?
You can mention it, yeah.
Maybe the person who's introducing the contract can mention it.
Okay, uh, I think that wraps up informational, anybody else have anything? That brings us back to public comments round two, uh, still can ask people to hold for three minutes if they can. It's black, if you're welcome to come twice. Nate, you able to run a block? How are you?
Good, are you, criminally black meeting, how so? Uh, Prince Louis just reminded me that the concert for the, at least the first graders was really wonderful, I appreciate that, and it was a really, really great program, the kids were excited to come. Um, participate, and they left happy, um, so I just wanted, but you know, we appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other additional comments? We actually.
I, I actually have one, just because I know Zach how much you appreciate. Appreciate Facebook, that, our esteemed previous tenant here, uh, Kevin Verbal posted that no Deerfield School Board member wanted to introduce the high school contract warrant article. They oscillated between Langley and Oxey, but neither wanted it, Langley, to his credit, manned up and will introduce it. That is exactly what I'm talking about, it is misrepresentation, and it's taking place on serious things that matter to our students and our community. It's exactly what I'm talking about.
It is a um. I will say it's unfortunate that that happens, and it happens with the frequency it does, because. The misrepresentation in that case was uh simply Nate and I both negotiated the contract and decided. I think we should reaffirm publicly, because we have a number of times the board force supports that contract, and remember, the board has voted to support that contract. And we wholeheartedly know that uh it is the right thing to the community, and unfortunately, we have to sit here making decisions, and everybody agrees with, but. So. That being said, any other citizens' comments?
Hi, I'm Bobby Ann Dotsey from Five Mile Road, I don't know, I actually came back up, um, kind of to piggyback on Mary Ann's comment. Deerfield High School choice is not against Concord, it's just. I think that for somebody who has gone to Concord High and who has a student. Who has a severe issues, there, there needs to be more options for this community, because we don't have our own high school. We're not against Concord High. I see that there are tons of people that slur and slander online, I think it's hard, because just like your message is being lost. So are the people who really. Do wanna spread the word that there are choice options, and that's why the event on the seventh is so important, because we have actual huge educational. Um. Advisors that can help answer those questions, not just for the community, but for everybody, I understand the contract makes everything easy. And easy is like, great, it's, it's easy and just push the button, and it's done. But life isn't easy, and every student deserves to have a chance and to have a healthy environment to learn in. And Concord is great for some, for a lot, a lot, but there are other opportunities that our community has that is much closer. Really, in relation to tran- transportation, as well as. The same C R T C options are also at other schools as well, so I just wanna clarify that the school choice is not against Concord, I appreciate your time.
The comments. Alright, it is, uh, what do we got, seven oh seven, I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second. Roll call, Kendra?
Aye.
Myself, yes, Nate, aye, and Andy, you wanna stick around, or you wanna call it a night?
Uh, yes, aye.
Thank you, everybody, appreciate your time coming up tonight. Alright.